Okay, good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, October 15th. Welcome to everyone. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscay, Nocedio, Harris Dawson, Weeza, Coetz, Krikorian, Lee Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Ten members present and accord, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rodriguez moves. Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Sodio moves. Bonin seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and it's time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone to please rise and Mr. Lee, if you would lead us in our flag salute?
Would everybody please face the flag, put right hand over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Let's continue.
Mr. President, due to the upcoming council recess, would council like to send all items forthwith today?
Yes, yes indeed.
Additionally, there is a request to continue items 1A to November 26, 1E to October 29, and 1L to October 22.
Okay, without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 15 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items.
Okay, then let's move forward.
Items 16 through 25 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the... Mr. Blumenfield?
I'd like to call 16 special.
Let's hold 16 at Mr. Blumenfield's request. And I'm told 25 as well. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 26 through 42 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on any of these items?
And yes, there are cards on all these items.
Okay, then continue.
On the supplemental agenda, items 43 through 48 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports have been submitted and posted for items 43 through 45. However, item 48 should be held on the desk for the committee report to be submitted.
Okay, we'll do that and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 49 through 61 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, again, without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all the items.
All right, then let's keep moving through the agenda. That brings us where?
That brings us to item 62, which is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Let me defer to our city attorney and receive a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item was heard in Budget and Finance. It's a standard settlement. I believe it can be addressed in open session unless members want to go into closed.
Okay, I don't see any questions on the queue. Why don't we, Madam Clerk, read the item and then we'll move forward and take action on it?
For item 62, in the case entitled Jesús Manárez versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, I think we're going to quickly move into multi-public comment. Mr. Sax, are you here? Mr. Arnold Sax, please come forward. You have items 1B through 1K and then you have items 2...
I have all the items. Easy. Homeboy, easy. I have all the items.
Mr. Sax, just wait.
Oh, I can wait, Herb. I can wait. Thank you.
Through items 30... 42 and then 49... Through 60, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Nice to be here. Had a little incident yesterday, so I'm a little upset about it. But let's talk about the REAP program and the housing program and the rental increase, the law that just changed it. I hope all the city council members got their eviction notices out for all your properties that you own so that you could take advantage of the new law. I mean, you might be able to get new tenants in and then kick them out so you can get another raise. And by the way, Herb, I remember reading a Business Journal magazine said you're worth half a billion dollars? How did you get to have so much money?
Mr. Sax, stay on the agenda.
Okay, so let's talk about some real estate because these properties that go into REAP become... They're almost useless to the owners because they can't make repairs because they can't afford them or they don't want to make repairs, so they become eligible, just like homes that go into foreclosure. The banks never did anything, the city never did anything, but the council members picked up a whole bunch of them, on the cheap even. What a great way to be a councilman. Do you look after anybody in the city other than yourselves? That's the real question. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any idea what hate speech is? Do you have an...
Would you get on topic, Mr. Sax, please?
I am. I am trying to be on topic. And I understand your rules are very, very constrictive to the people that come here and speak.
Just say, "Mr. Sax, get on topic. I gave you your items."
Well, I'm trying to be on topic, sir.
Mr. Sax, you're not speaking of the items you signed up for. Would you like to just go to general public comment?
No, no, no. Let me finish, sir. Thank you. I appreciate your input, sir. You are as wise as a...
Okay, you're on topic. Mr. Sax, why don't we give Mr. Sax his one minute? Let's give him his one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Sax.
And compliment the man for his... Okay, so Mr. City Attorney, what is hate speech? I mean, there was a meeting yesterday or on Saturday about hate speech in Union Mission. What exactly makes up hate speech, Mr. City Attorney? I'm asking you a question. Don't you want to reply? Because you'll make judg... And what about... What about the city charter? Do you enforce the city charter? There's a lot of items here for public hearings and you can only speak on one of them, one minute. But the city charter allows you to speak on all of them. How come you allow the city council to change the city charter without putting it before the public for a vote? And people come here to expect answers for questions they have about housing and homelessness and yet you cheat the system? How can that possibly be? So what do you tell the people here? "We're on it." Yeah, you're on it, all right. Why don't you get off of it and get busy and do something for the public?
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Okay, let's do a little voting right now. Let's vote on... Let's vote on items 26, 27, and then let's also include items 29 through 34. We ready, Mr. Clerk? Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now let's look at items or vote on items 36 through 42. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And I believe items 49 through 59?
Although, Mr. President, I believe there's an amending motion for item 54.
Let's hold 54. Let's hold... Let's vote on 49 separately, so...
So then we could vote on items 50 through 53?
Okay, so let's vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And so what's left then, 56 through 59?
Yes, 56 through 59.
Okay, let's vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And let's vote on reconsideration on item 50. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And then, Mr. President, the ordinances for these items will be held over one week unless reconsidered today with 12 members present.
Go ahead. A quick announcement from Mr. Blumenfield.
On 49, I'm going to recuse myself on 49 as even though my wife has not worked at the Discovery Cube for three-plus years, she's on the foundation board, so in an abundance of carefulness, I'm recusing myself from that vote because it affects a group that she's on the board of.
Okay, let's vote on 49. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now let's vote on item 50. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. And Mr. Blumenfield?
Sorry? It's okay.
Okay, now let's vote on item 50. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, let me call up Lynn Moses. Items 1B through 1K, items 2 through 15. Mr. Moses?
Thank you. I'm here like everybody else. Talk about the same thing. You people are not doing your jobs. You are not representing the people.
Mr. Moses, you have to speak. I gave you a list of items that you signed up to speak on, so you have to speak towards those items.
I am speaking. I am speaking towards those items.
Hold his time, Mr. Moses, just trying to... And then you'll get your one minute for general public comment, but your other time, you have to address the items that you signed up to speak on. And I gave you those items. Now we can go directly to your general comment and you can just speak. The choice is yours, sir.
Which items?
I gave you the items. You signed up for them. There were items 1B through 1K, I believe. And then you signed up for items 2 through 15. So you have to speak to those items. Or you can go directly to your general public comment.
Today, I'll go to my public comment.
Okay, let's go to his general... Yes, sir.
What is the lowest form of human life? It's cannibalism. The act of consuming another individual of the same species as food. Can't we expound on that? To you people, you're making $200,000 a year, each one of you. If we dug up your backyards, we could pay off the national debt. These people are hungry. These people want representation. We have to step over the homeless just to get in here. Marquise Dawson, you, Mr. Wesson, putting up these projects that don't represent the people. He's trying to evict the Afibah Center and the people. This is the people's house, not yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Thank you. Okay, let's... We're going to have a reconsideration vote on item 40. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Let's move to item 35. Okay, let's... 35. I would like to quickly call up Suzette Shaw, Rochelle Mills, Sarah W., Monique Davis, Carmen Payne. Please come. If I called your names, please come up. Please identify yourself.
Good day. My name is Suzette Shaw. I'm a Skid Row resident and advocate for causes as it relates to as displaced people to Skid Row and social issues directed towards women. Not to be disrespectful, but I believe this agenda item is in regards to housing. So I want to make sure that I'm clear in advocating for us in the respect of... You know, we have to. I mean, I think that these men have really been pretty much on target in regards to that. We really need to step up. And when I say "we," I'm being respectful of including you all in that, that we really need to step up and be more accountable for the duties that we have been graciously invited to partake in the initiatives for this community. We are your constituents, whether we live on... We are your constituents, whether we live on the ground, whether we're in the, sleeping on a concrete, or whether we are housed, we are still your constituents, whether we are poor or whether we are rich. We are still your constituents, whether we live in Skid Row or whether we live in Beverly Hills. We are your constituents.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Yes, identify yourself, please.
Rochelle Mills. I'm a resident in 90016, your council district. I am here in support of the HHH Challenge Grant or the Challenge Loan Projects because they are well thought out, well designed, and are a great solution for our housing crisis.
Thank you. Next speaker.[646.32][646.32](APPLAUSE). And I'm looking for Robert Walton and Marcia Jones. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Monique Davis and I am the Chief Engagement Officer for Skid Row Housing Trust. I'm here on behalf of the organization to represent and encourage the grants for the HHH projects and want to make sure that we continue housing for the chronically homeless or the homeless individuals in our city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Carmen Payne. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you guys for all your hard work. With the item number 35, there are a lot of people that also need housing, but everyone cannot afford expensive housing, and I believe that we should include opportunities for the low-income to have a place as well as those that can afford the housing. And so I wanted to say that no one should be left out. Everyone should have a place to stay and an opportunity. The rents are going higher than salaries and incomes and no one should be excluded because of that, so I was hoping that would be taken into consideration. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker.[723.56][723.56](APPLAUSE). Yes.
Good morning. My name is Robert Walton. I live in your district at 2645 Crenshaw Boulevard. We moved in a year ago. We had a 5.48 increase in rent. These people like I live on a fixed income. Our Social Security and our pensions do not go up to meet the qualifications of living in the community. I have lived there since 1956. I'm 70 years old and I'm gonna be displaced because you, you, sir, came out yourself and the mayor and said that we would be able to live in this community for low-end housing and now it's something totally different, less than a year. The rent went up 5.4. What is you going to do, or you are going to do, to be more professional, about what's going on because you seem to appear to care about nothing? How do you sleep at night? How do you sleep at night? Do you sleep comfortably without worry like the rest of the people that got to worry about things, deliver food or medical? Do you realize people have other expenses?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, now let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. I'd certainly support this item. We desperately need housing and the innovation is really important to get these things, funds done quicker. But I have to say I'm frustrated too by this item and it's because I had a, I had a project that was right in front of us that could have had a whole number of units, 36 units, 18 units of more than 36 people, and had people move in by December. But it wouldn't qualify for this because it was too innovative for the innovative funds and the frustrating part, it wasn't all that innovative. The idea was just to buy an existing building and to move people into that building. The building was just, you know, take a building that was built as luxury and flip the script and put in people. But because of the metrics that we use, it wouldn't qualify for these funds. And it's very frustrating to me because, one, the way we design this, we don't have a metric, we don't, we don't give credit for moving people in today versus two or three years from now. And even though the project that, that buying this building was actually cheaper than a lot of the Triple H projects that we are approving, it couldn't quite compete with some of these because of a number of reasons. One, the first and foremost is that we, we don't give credit for moving people in right away. But second, this was a luxury building where we could have converted it to a sort of Golden Girls Apartments where we move seniors because it, rooms that have four bedrooms and a kitchen. We could have made a Golden Girls senior thing in the, in the top floors and the units that had two levels, could have been transitional age youth, think Friends, think all those things. And yet we couldn't get it done. And I tried really hard to get it to qualify. And then I went to LA Family Housing to get them to try to lease the building up. Then I went to HC to try to get them to buy the building. And none of it would pencil out, not because it's not affordable, but because our metrics are not right in some respect. Now, I don't want to hold this up because these are critical housing projects and we need to do everything to move forward, but I tell you, I'm really frustrated because there are things that we can do, shared housing, using these metrics of moving people in, that we could get people in tomorrow and we're not gonna do it. And we've missed an opportunity with this funds and it's incredibly frustrating to me to have a building in my district where all it would take is a little bit of money and we could have moved people in next month and it's not gonna happen because it wasn't considered under this proposal despite my efforts to make that happen. So with that, I'm gonna vote yes on this, but I'm very frustrated.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just, just colleagues really quickly to say that moving forward as we leave the arena of HHH funding and we get more funding from other sources, including the state, we're working on making sure that regardless of the funding source, it will have fewer restrictions. So we, we have the flexibility and we're nimble enough to take action describing the frustrations that you encountered with this project, Mr. Blumenfield. So I'm very hopeful in that regard. And colleagues, that said, I'd like this to move forward with the communication from the chair, which does not sacrifice our oversight responsibilities, nor does, does it sacrifice expedience in moving these innovative projects forward. The committee's done a lot of work on this. I'm very proud and I think we're gonna see a lot of successful examples moving forward, as I mentioned, beyond HHH and how we can get people housed more quickly and more cheaply. That's what this is all about. So that's my suggestion, colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Now let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
Okay, can now, let's move and take up items 2 through 15. Ready, Mr. Clerk? Let's, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Ms. Rodriguez, for your presentation. Mr. Price, as she's walking up there, it's my understanding you have a quick introduction.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Colleagues joining us today is a group of 39 international graduate students from the University of Southern California, Seoul, Price School of Public Policy. They're currently enrolled in Professor Kai-Kai's seminar on comparative public policy and management, learning about the practice of public policy analysis in the context of the American legislature. They're accompanied today by their professor to attend a live public hearing session deliberating, deliberating on local legislation matters and to gain firsthand exposure to LA City Council legislative affairs. Our guests hail from different countries, including China, Kazakhstan, Republic of Korea, Indonesia, Taiwan, Thailand, Afghanistan, and the United States. Colleagues, let's welcome our, our guests.
Okay, good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. I am very delighted today to be joined by our friends from ABC Seven in celebration of 25 years of Vista LA. Can we please give them a round of applause? For 25 years, Vista LA has been the place where Angelenos have turned to get a little deeper sense of what our community is like. And when I talk about our community, I'm talking about the Latino community. And going back to when it originated, and I remember this 25 years ago, when Vista LA, when Henry Alfaro was the face of Vista LA, I remember him going to places in Boyle Heights, going to places in the East Side and in the San Fernando Valley and really helped shed a more positive light on the contributions that our community was making. You know, I wanted to bring a photo that, that I, I had my dad go back and search when he was starting the Explorer Program over at Fire Station 2 in Boyle Heights, when Henry Alfaro visited Roosevelt Fire Academy. And it was that spotlight that helped to actually expand the efforts that would then build on emanating from the East Side and becoming one of the most successful citywide youth engagement programs that the city has ever seen through the Fire Academy program. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Henry for his contributions in shedding a light on the work of everyday people and some of our everyday trailblazers in their contributions here in the city of Los Angeles. But I'm joined today by some of our incredible friends from ABC Seven, of course, Teresa Samaniego, our Vice President of Diversity and Community Engagement at ABC, Danny Romero, Vista LA co-host and weekend evening weathercaster for ABC Eyewitness News, Annabel Munoz, another Vista LA co-host, Jose Mayorkin, and Jessica Dominguez, who are Vista LA producers, and of course, Pocoyman native, our friend, retired ABC Head of Diversity, Diane Medina. Would you please give them a round of applause?
Give them a round of applause. Welcome and thank you. Thank you for your service.
So I want to start by asking if we could run the reel of our Vista LA.
It's a familiar sight at La Placita, Olvera, a group of musicians doing what they love while honoring their cultural roots. But for La Santa Cecilia, Olvera Street is more than just a tourist destination. It's home.
It was Sal Castro's concern over the unfair treatment of Latino students at Belmont High in Los Angeles that motivated him to take action.
The more I saw what was not happening for the young people, the more I felt a weight on the shoulders.
Little Libros, the idea was born when I had my first son. I really wanted to ensure he spoke Spanish and was connected to his culture.
From covering stories like Latinas in STEM, the first-ever LGBTQ mariachi that happened to also be featured at El Grito last year, to the millennial Loteria, Vista LA showcases our rich culture shedding light on issues and serving as a voice for the growing and diverse Latino community. Latinos are the largest ethnic group, representing half of the population here in Los Angeles, and our contributions can be seen everywhere in the city, from food, entertainment, and the arts. At this time, I want to invite our friend and co-host of Vista LA, Danny Romero, for some remarks.[1401.41][1401.41](APPLAUSE).
Thanks very much. Thank you. I want to thank, well, thanks to the council for the wrap-up Latino Heritage Month for honoring this great, great show and of course, all the members here and of course, Council, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez herself for recommending us. We appreciate that. Uh, thank you, of course, all the management of Channel 7, of course, Rob Elmore, Cheryl Fair, we mentioned Teresa Samaniego, Diane Medina, wonderful, wonderful woman, known for years. Uh, the producers that we mentioned, Jessica Dominguez, Jose Mayorkin, these are the folks that really put these stories together for us. And of course, all of our past hosts, including like Henry Alfaro, as you mentioned there, Giovanna Lada, who could make it today, and Annabel Munoz, one of the, one of the newbies doing, doing the great job for the show as well. And we just really appreciate, I mean, in terms of this show Vista LA being a show, I mean, I was born and raised here in LA myself, a Latino growing up in Boyle Heights, East LA, Lincoln Heights, moved all around. And so to see stories on, on a television station about Latinos here, whether it be about music, about cars, about politics, about just city life, the, the life that I knew, to see it on television for everyone else to see was truly a major, major moment for me and my familia to have. And so to be a part of that show myself later on, I grew up and it's like, wow, now I'm actually doing these stories. And it's really been a great, great venue for us. So having that at Channel 7, Vista LA has been truly a great, great moment and we thank you for recognizing the show that really says a lot to and about the Latinos here in LA. Thank you very much.[1485.91][1485.91](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. I joined the show four years ago, but I definitely want to thank the people who came before me. I know there are so many people that have poured their souls into this show. I wish that you could see these producers working from home. I wish that you could see the editors working to piece this show to perfection because they want to honor the people who have entrusted them with their stories. Uh, this show was valuable and needed 25 years ago and it is just as valuable and needed today. There are still many stories that are untold, more people to learn from, more communities to honor, and there are people in this room who are waiting to share their stories as well. Representation matters. It matters that children see themselves represented in you as public servants on TV, in film, in news, and in programs like this one. We've made progress, but we do still have a long way to go. So we want to thank you for this recognition and we especially thank every viewer who has ever reached out to us to say that they feel heard because of this show.
Thank you, colleagues.
Now, I'd like to call up two other members at this point, Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Sadiel.
Thank you very much. And first and foremost, congratulations to Vista LA. Incredible, incredible. And I really appreciate the sentiment that Danny mentioned, which is, you know, to see a reflection of our community on television. In this day and age with, despite Latinos being more than 50% of the city, we lack in film, we lack on television, and to see a show that not only represents us, but things in our community, things we can relate to. It's an incredible show that's gone on for 25 years. I hope it goes on for another 25 more and then some. And I want to thank ABC and the producers for sticking to it. Uh, it's a very important show. The, the impact this show has had cannot be underestimated. It's been positive not only for Latinos, but the whole city, for others to see the rich culture that we have and the contributions that Latinos are making to the city and beyond. So, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for bringing this in and congratulations to ABC. Let's keep it going. Thank you.
Mr. Sadiel.
Just let me add my voice to the thank yous for what you do. Uh, you are absolutely right. It is more valuable today, more urgent today, more needed today. This is a time period of extraordinary racism and xenophobia, anti-immigrant hysteria, and in the midst of that, you come on a regular basis to inform the city that those images, those projections, that those stereotypes are in fact not true. Uh, that in fact, that we are a very rich and diverse community with incredible contributions to make to the city and to the society. And you do that, and you do that in a very extraordinary manner. And so I thank you for that. Uh, the only unfortunate part is that you're not on more, that you're not 24/7, because it should be. Because those stories are abundant, they're available, they're there to be told. And yet if you look at the regular programming, and not just ABC, but all the stations and much of cable, that programming does not reflect the city of Los Angeles, the state of California, and the richness of the contributions of our community. For some reason, our talents and our contributions seem to stop at the border. Uh, at least the presentation of those contributions stop at the border. And Vista LA is exactly that. It is one viewpoint, one perspective that shows that there are an abundance of contributions that we are making and that are to be made and that people should know about them. And so for that, I thank you. Much gracias.
Ms. Rodriguez to close.
Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Jose and Gil, for your comments. I think they are absolutely reflective of how we need to continue to be shedding a light on all the positive contributions that our community makes in this city. But more importantly, I want to thank Vista LA and ABC Seven for its commitment for more than, for 25 years of highlighting the good stories and the good parts of the work that is being done on the streets of Los Angeles by selfless community leaders, by the gifted talents of so many artists that are in our likeness. And I think that's what's most remarkable about ABC Seven and I, and I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge even some of the community reporting that is happening right now to help shed a light on all of the, the variety of works that are happening across this city. We are, our strength is our diversity. And I think ABC Seven has been doing for 25 years and continues to tell the story of the contributions of everyday Angelenos and how they are also working to make our city better. So, congratulations. So congratulations, ABC Seven, for Vista L.A. for 25 years of remarkable service. We look forward to your continued work. Congratulations.
Thank you guys so very much. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, let us now prepare to vote on item 48. Let's...
And Mr. President, for the record, that committee report has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Okay, let's do reconsideration on some of our ordinances.
And Mr. President, that would be items 26, 27, 29 through 33, and for items 43 through 47.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now this vote on the items themselves. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's take up item 25. Mr. Lee, are you, Mr. Lee, you want to take up item 25 at this time?
I'm sorry? Item 25?
Yeah. Item 25, would you like to?
And for the record, an amending motion has been distributed for item 25.
Okay, Mr. Lee.
I think everyone in this room understands the crisis we are facing, but there's a common misconception about Council District 12, and I wanted to clear that up, that we have not been supportive of HHH Housing, but in fact, that this is the first project that's ever reached this point. And the only reason that we were, tried to pull this out of committee was because this came to our attention the very day before I was sworn into office. And while, you know, we were taking office, we wanted to learn more about the project, we wanted to meet with the developers, we wanted to meet with our community, we wanted to ensure that this developer was meeting with our community to address some of the concerns that they may have. And so I appreciate that this council has given us the time between the committee and now hearing it today to have that discussion, to reach out to them, to talk to them about the things that are important to this community and how, you know, CD 12 can be a partner with us moving forward. You know, I appreciate seeing, you know, in the audience, so many different faces that we are working on together, facing all the different problems, facing the homelessness, and, you know, that are facing our unsheltered in our district. But, you know, I, you know, I along with, I'm sure, the rest of my colleagues, urge an eye vote for the matter before us today. Thank you very much.
Well said, John. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so I'm gonna do a public comment. We'll do Mr. City Attorney, 10 minutes, minute each.
Yes.
Leonora Camner, Terry Ludecky, Aldofo, I can't pronounce the last name, Dr. Myron Dimbo, Caleb Crowder, please come forward. Please, let's hurry up, guys. Please come forward. Pastor Lisa Williams. You don't have to be in order, sir, come on. Just identify yourself and go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Caleb Crowder. I'm with the Everyone In Campaign. It was great news that we just received from Councilmember Lee. We were here to urge this board to receive and accept the recommendations of the Homelessness and Poverty Committee to move forward and make sure that all of the units are contained within this package get approved. I mean, as you mentioned, Councilmember Lee, we're in the midst of a crisis. I think we all know that. I'm not going to take up too much more time, but just say, I would urge you to have all eyes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Terry Ludeck. I am also with the Everyone In Campaign. We have a housing crisis that in many cases results in people experiencing homelessness. For this item, please approve the development. CD 12 is the only district that has no HHH funding for supportive housing. We need to move ahead with this project despite the local opposition. Building this housing is an important way that we can address this housing crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please come forward, identify yourself, please. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
I'm Myron Dimbo. I'm a resident of the San Fernando Valley and a supporter of Everyone In. I support this project. I think it's important. I feel that every project that comes before this council deals with the issue of fear and anxiety. If we can learn to treat people who are experiencing homelessness with respect and compassion, we'll get a much, we'll get a lot done. It'll be easier because these people deserve the respect. They are members of our community, and I wholly support the building of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and I'm looking for Sheila Lane and Dara Papel. Yes, identify yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Adolfo Alzafar. I'm an organizer with the Everyone In Campaign. I'm in support of this project and for permanent supportive housing. As we know, we've got a long history in the city of trying to define community, trying to define equity, trying to define development. We have been a racist city. We've zoned some folks out, and we have, we finally have the chance to build the infrastructure that can lead us to the sort of city that our citizens, that our stakeholders believe that we should have. We, the Everyone In Campaign, we're 100,000 supporters and growing, so when we say that 100,000 folks are standing up for this infrastructure, we really don't mean it lightly. We love our relationships with you all and believe that we can build a great city together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Lisa Williams, and I'm the pastor at the San Pedro United Methodist Church. And like many of you here today, I walk the streets of our community, and I see people sleeping on the streets of our city and on the steps of our church. I perhaps see people living in their cars and even on their tents, and I am heartbroken. In my business, I have the opportunity to talk to many people, and when I hear someone say, "They need to do more," I ask, "Who is 'they'?" I believe that we are all part of "they." "They" is all of us. It's our politicians, it's our companies, our businesses, our citizens, and especially our faith communities. During World War II, sailors came to port in San Pedro, and they would follow a beacon of light. And when they got to that beacon of light, they would receive a hot meal, a sandwich, and a letter to home.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Everybody gets a minute. Next speaker, identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Mark Novak. I've resided in the San Fernando Valley for the past 50 years. I represent the Interface Solidarity Network, which is a member of the Everyone In Coalition. I've read the opposition to this measure, and it's full of prejudice and myths. There's no valid reason set forth in that opposition. Council District 12 is the only district in this city that does not have a homeless project. I would think that would be an embarrassment to this project, to this body, and I urge you to support this measure. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Sister Grace, and I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak. I've been working with the homeless for over 20 years, from Maine to Los Angeles, and I'm here to encourage you to open your hearts, your minds, your communities, and Los Angeles wallets to our neighbors without walls. These are just two of our neighbors without walls. Oh, sorry, I have her upside down. This is Karen, and this is John, just two of our young people here in Los Angeles, two of the 23,000 that are left, that are released from DHJ custody. Every single year, many of them out on the streets. So I'm just urging you, open your hearts, open your minds, open your communities, and open your wallets, because no one should live like this. Last picture. I went over and got these made up before I came here. I stopped at CVS. The girl at the counter, I told her my funds were kind of tight, so I could only make up two. She reached into her heart and to her pocket, and she made up this picture.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next.
My name is Reverend Steve Gerby. I'm a resident in Council District 12. Councilmember Lee, I want to thank you for hearing the voices of my neighbors and our community.
Let me stop you, and I'll give you your time from the top. If I did not call your name, please don't get into the line until I call your name. Go ahead, sir.
Right. So I want to say, as a resident of Council District 12, that I support the efforts in every district, including my own. I am also the Chair of the Interface Solidarity Network, an organization in the San Fernando Valley that represents over 50 faith communities, congregations, synagogues, temples, mosques, and other faith communities, and we stand responding to the homelessness crisis. Proverbs tells us that without a vision, the people perish. Funding for HHH is the vision, and now we as a community have an opportunity to step into that vision and make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning, council. My name is Dara Papel, and I represent Corporation for Supportive Housing, or CSH. We're a national nonprofit organization, and we believe that high-quality supportive housing solutions need to be integrated into the way every Los Angeles Council District serves the men and women and children in most in need. The entire HHH funding packet, package ensures that some geographic equity will exist throughout the city of Los Angeles. You'll hear from some of our CSH speak-up advocates shortly on what their experiences have been and in their advocacy as well. No matter which council district you represent, we really know that supportive housing is an intervention that works, and we appreciate your support across the city of Los Angeles. And thank you again for the opportunity today.
Yes, next speaker.
Hello. My name is Sheila Lane, and I live in Council District Four. I'm a volunteer with an organization called Stories from the Front Line. We offer a showcase for formerly homeless people and those who work with them to share their stories with the public. A common element in many of these stories is the joy, relief, and thankfulness our speakers felt when they were handed a key to their own home and permanent supportive housing. This feeling was often followed by a compelling need to turn around and help lift others out of that homelessness. Today, I ask that you approve the package of housing projects before you in all communities so that our homeless neighbors have a chance for a better life throughout our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could get Pastor Q and Becky Dennison, Pastor Q and Becky Dennison, please come And Sister Grace, that should give us, that should wrap it up. Pastor Q, Becky Dennison, Sister Grace, please come forward.
We signed up too.
Please, ma'am, you gotta sit down. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Becky Dennison with Venice Community Housing. Just want to repeat all of the urgent support for this last approval of HHH funds and every single project on the list that met the criteria in the program that you all defined. I do just want to also say that it is really exciting to have tenant protections on the agenda on the same day, because unless we do both together at the same urgency, we cannot meet this housing crisis. So it is excellent to see this going forward. I urge you to help us and work with us to move every single project in the HHH pipeline through faster so we can house folks living on our streets and help people stay in their homes right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I need Sister Grace and Matt Fisher. Now, you, ma'am, no, come on, no, no, you have to go, when I call your name, because you already spoke. Yes, sir.
Matt Fisher, a member of the Venice Neighborhood Council, but representing myself today. Just want to encourage you guys to get these units in our communities and thank Mr. Lee, wherever he went, for stepping up finally. Thank you.
Kendrick Rustard, Rustard, please come forward. And Lex Roman. Yes, sir.
Hi, Kendrick Rustard, with K.R. Interior Design Group. I'm a resident of the historic core, and let's see, where am I here? We're at a critical turning point in history here in L.A. We can continue to let developers, similar to Trump, control our future, or we can unite and take care of all our different community needs and create a more livable city for everyone in the future. I want to acknowledge Councilman O'Farrell, who's relatively new, the new chairman of the Homeless and Poverty Committee, for listening and quick learning that led to his support and push for innovative design to solve the housing issues of our city that our city is facing. I witnessed his change of attitude from not questioning the existing way the city government thinks. In this case, it was a loss of finance committee. They were over budget by over $100,000 per unit and several thousand...
Thank you. Next speaker, thank you. Identify yourself.
Hi, Lex Roman. I'm here in support of all of the proposed housing that you're voting on today. Three years ago, after Triple H passed, I called the mayor's office, and I asked what I could do to ensure that these funds were spent efficiently. What I heard was that the biggest barrier was going to be public support, and that's been true. I've spoken at council meetings all over neighborhood councils with community groups. I'm very involved in this crisis now, providing drop-in centers, showers, and food to folks in need. But we are here today, many of us are here, because it's not clear that city council will vote and do the correct thing, spending these funds towards supportive housing. With some of the recent actions you've taken, that's been unclear. We need your support. Vote yes to all of these proposed units. Shame on any council member who chooses to keep people on the streets when we could be building housing.
Okay. I'm gonna call one more person. Which city attorney will, that'll fill up the 10 minutes. Christina Martinez. Christina Martinez, please come forward. Go right ahead.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Christina Martinez. I work for Affirmed Housing, the affordable housing developer that is proposing the project in Councilman Lee's district that he previously discussed earlier. I just wanted to let everyone know that we're working with the councilman's office, unaware of his expectations of us in this project, and his goal of us meeting with the community, and just want to vocalize that that is also our goal, and we want to, we will have a community meeting next week to sort of get feedback from everybody so that we can make this project the best one that it can be, that everyone can be proud of. Urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, last speaker, Kathy Huck. Last speaker, Kathy Huck. Kathy, come on now.
We signed up also.
No, ma'am, please, please, sit down. Miss, miss, don't disrupt. And then, and you testified, just sit down. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kathy Huck, and I am the Executive Director and the founder of About My Father's Business Homeless Outreach Ministry. We're working in Chatsworth. And I just want to tell you that I am definitely for permanent supportive housing in Chatsworth. We just don't have it. We don't have it. It reminds me of the HIV crisis in the 80s. I'm that old, and nobody listened. We thought it was everything until it was at our front door. And if we don't take care of this, TB, meningitis, hepatitis, typhoid, when is it, are we gonna wait till it's at our front door? Unsheltered, having unsheltered neighbors, there are deaths on the street. How much is it costing us? How much is it costing us in medical, to the city, to the county? Also, cleanups. Isn't it cheaper to provide garbage pickup than to pay for back holes and to pay for people to come in and pick it up? I'm working right now with Councilman Lee, who has promised to make sure that we have garbage pickup for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. The rest of the names will go into the record. Mr. Blumenfield.
Great. Thank you. I rise in strong support of this. It is critical that we have affordable housing. We have a human crisis on our hands, and we need to do everything that we can as fast as we can. And I know that everyone around this horseshoe... And I know that everyone around this horseshoe believes the same. I'm thrilled there is a project in this in my district for eighty units in the West Valley, and it's tough getting folks, developers, to come out to the West Valley. So I want to thank Mr. Lee and appreciate that he's moving forward with funding in his district, because, as I mentioned, it's tough in the West Valley. We have an item later in this about some TAPRA funding. In order for me to get those thirteen units earlier, I had to literally spend $1.5 million in CRA money on a previous one, just to be able to get the land so that we could get, entice somebody to do a project. So, and in some districts, like Mr. Sadio's district, they're just, people are just piling in, and you can say yes and no. In my district, in the West Valley, we are begging folks to come in and, developers to come in and provide us affordable housing. Thank goodness, there is a project in my district that I strongly support that made it on this list. And again, I'm thrilled Mr. Lee is moving forward and appreciate the hard efforts that he's doing and working with the developer, because it is a challenge. And I appreciate that, and just urge us to move forward with expediency with these projects, and then also to get creative, to be able to spend money to get people housed immediately and not just years in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Wizar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first and foremost, I want to say that I could appreciate a project going up in the valley, given that when we first anticipated Measure Triple H to go up, we anticipated them to go out throughout the city. And in fact, we all took a pledge to have a certain number of units within our own district that would help with that disbursement. But at the same time, I could appreciate Mr. Lee, being a new council member, coming in to ask questions, to make sure that these units will be run properly, to make sure that they have community relations. And one of the reasons I say that is because there are two other projects in this package that are both in, two in Council District 14 and one in the valley. But one of them that is in Council District 14, I also had those questions. In fact, the one on First and Lorena, Lorena Plaza, my district, which perhaps has built more Triple H units, Bow Heights in particular, has built more affordable housing than anywhere else in the city, we had some concerns about that operator who has, is operating some permanent supportive housing about ten blocks west of their proposed one. There was a lot of loitering, there was a lot of disruptions in the community. And when we campaigned for Triple H, we told the communities, we told the city, that these permanent supportive housing units would be like any other apartments. You wouldn't even be able to tout their housing for homeless. But when we have an operator that does not comply with that, does not work well with the community, doesn't care about the community, it's a low-income community, they're saying, why should we even care? The community has a right to ask questions. The community has a right to say, hey, let's make sure you are a good operator. So I experienced that on Lorena Plaza, so I think it's right that any of us, as Mr. Lee did, want to see a little time to build that relationship with that operator so that we could be more successful in the future as we proposed more permanent housing units. It's difficult. It's difficult time to find property. It's difficult to place this. The community doesn't understand what they are. But we also need good operators to go there, and we should do our due diligence each and every time, so that we continue to be successful and implement more of these Triple H projects throughout the city. So I'm happy to see these move forward, and there's gonna be many more, so we could fulfill our commitment and our promise we made to the voters to build 10,000 units with this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee to close.
Again, you know, I've heard it from some of the speakers and from my colleagues. First of all, thank you to all my colleagues for giving me the time from committee, again to now, to meet with the developer, meet with the community. But again, there is that misconception of CD-12. We have never denied an HHH project. They have never been proposed inside of our district. I have been in office for six weeks. I've met with the West Valley Alliance at all of their meetings. I've met with Hope of the Valley to look at proposed future sites. We believe that CD-12 needs to be part of this solution, and we are committed to that. But at the same time, we wanted to make sure that this developer, and I appreciate Affirmed Housing coming up here and pledging to having that community meeting on October 22nd. I just want to remind everybody that before HHH, before H, six years ago, our community worked together to build a ninety-bed homeless shelter right in the middle of Northridge that has been one of the most successful homeless shelters in the city of Los Angeles. And I'm going to hold Affirmed to have the same, to hold them to the same commitment that the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission did, because this was a place that our community, not only, obviously, there was opposition to it, but we fought through that opposition. We heard their concerns, and we kept saying yes until they stopped asking questions. And we built a center, and with their help, we've had the most, one of the most successful centers that has not had a single complaint in six years, and that we will hold Affirmed to the same standards that we have held them to. But I wanted to make it clear, CD-12 has never, ever denied an HHH project. All the projects that have been applied to in our district, they have fallen through on their own. So we are not developers in the city. So, you know, while this project was a surprise to us, I appreciate this council giving me the time to work with, again, with the developer and with the community, to make sure that this project is just as successful as the other projects that we have built before in CD-12.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
This is approved. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call this item forthwith, so we can get cracking on all this. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to items sixty and sixty-one, which we are going to hear together. Okay, we're gonna begin with fifteen minutes of public comment on this item. The first speaker will be Red Plaschert, to be followed by Diana Casten Yellis.
RD Plascher, thank you. We ask, I ask, as part of the people here, that you include the diverse income populations from extremely low, very low, low, and middle-income people. We want you to, I want you to mandate developers, owners, and landlords in new and/or aged properties, regardless of income populations, to accept vouchers as they would for full cash payers. This is part of the tenant, tenants being evicted and the being let in and out. Thank you very much for this brief moment.
Thank you, Ms. Casten Yellis, followed by Angelina Jimenez, Maria Ibarra, and Rosie Guardado.
Good morning. My name is Diana Casten Yellis. First of all, I would like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to what I need to say, especially Councilmembers Mitchell Farrell, Nuri Martinez, and Corinne Price, for recognizing the urgency and bringing forward these two motions. I am an ACCE member, as well as one of ten tenants, living in a District Nine apartments, where we are seeing an increase in rent. We have seen the first increase of 100% in April of 2019. We went from paying $756 to $1,495, and now are facing a second increase in just a couple of days. We are now looking at going from $1,495 to $2,350. We are two hard-working, stable people who have worked at our prospective jobs for over seventeen years. However, this increase in rent is not affordable for anyone, especially not a family of five, nor seniors, nor veterans. We are here looking for help from our fellow council members. We want them to really pay attention and look at not just our stories, but probably many people's stories who just may be going through our situation at this same situation. Thank you.
Maria Ibarra. Perhaps not here, Rosie Guardado. To be followed by Reina Martinez and Renee Moya.
Mi nombre es Rosie Guardado. Represento el edificio que está en Tobias Avenue, Panorama City, California.
One moment. I can interpret for her. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, my name is Rosie Guardado, Guardado. I come with ACE. I'm from the building at 91. Oh, se lo va a hacer? Gracias.
Ah, mi nombre es Rosie Guardado. Vengo con ACE.
My name is Rosie Guardado, and I'm with ACE.
Vengo del edificio 91, 29 Tobias Avenue, Panorama City.
91, 29 Tobias Avenue, that's my address in Panorama City.
Nos dieron una nota de sesenta días para desalojar el edificio.
We have a notice to vacate the building within sixty days, and we received that notice without any, without any comments, any reasons.
Okay. Pero gracias a ACE y señora Nuri por invitarnos este día a asistir para obtener una buena ayuda.
I would like to thank ACE and Mrs. Nuri Martinez for inviting us today to, we're here to try to get some help.
Ya que no es fácil encontrar una vivienda en tan poco tiempo y a nuestro alcance económico.
It is not easy to find housing, let alone find housing, affordable housing.
Nosotros lo que pedimos es al dueño es una respuesta favorable para que nos dé más tiempo y así poder encontrar un lugar para donde vivir.
We are asking the property owner to give us a little bit more time to find a new place to live.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you.
Susan Hunter, Housing is a Human Right, and I'm here today to say thank you, thank you, thank you so much to Corinne Price and Mitch O'Farrell and Nuri Martinez for bringing these motions today, because we need to protect as many renters as we can right now. We're begging you, please, do not kick this to committee. We're begging you, please, to help protect these tenants right now. I have a tenant who is actually getting evicted today on a sixty-day notice. We don't have time. We need you to move on this today. We can't say thank you enough. Get this back into council next week, and let's do something to push back on greedy landlords who think that they have a right to kick more tenants out in the street and expect everybody else to pick up the tab to pay for their services. We need to protect our own, and that's why we're here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Renee Moya, with Housing is a Human Right by the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I also want to communicate my thanks to Nuri Martinez, to Mitchell Farrell, and to Corinne Price. These motions are extremely important. We are seeing dozens of buildings across the city of Los Angeles right now facing these evictions, retaliatory evictions, as a result of state law AB 1482. We need to ensure that these motions happen, they happen quickly, that they go straight to City Council, skipping the committee stage. We also need to ensure that they keep as broad a language as possible to protect as many tenants as possible during this emergency. I should also add that, you know, for the last couple of years, we've allowed certain bills or certain ordinances to languish in committee or before the City Council now, such as the expansion of permanent just cause protections for all units in Los Angeles. We strongly urge you to strike while the iron is hot, bring that ordinance out, do the same with the anti-tenant harassment ordinance, and basically do the right thing. Thank you so very much for that.
Mi nombre es Reina Martinez, y estoy aquí también porque me han dado una notificación de sesenta días.
One second.
Sí. Okay.
Hello, my name is Reina Martinez. También me han dado una notificación de sesenta días. I have also received a sixty-day notice. Soy madre soltera, y pues por el momento no tengo dónde irme. I'm a single parent. I don't have a, I don't have a place to go. Y los dueños nos están dando una presión demasiada fuerte para desalojar. There is a lot of pressure from the property owners. No, pues yo estoy muy agradecida con ACE que nos están ayudando para ver qué pueden hacer por mí. I'm very thankful that ACE is doing something to help us. Muchas gracias. I'm sorry. Should I say it again? Reina Martinez. Reina Martinez. Estoy aquí porque también tengo una notificación de sesenta días. I also have a sixty-day notice. Está pronto por terminar. Soy single mother, y no tengo ahorita dónde irme. And I don't have a place to live. Estoy en la organización, y ellos son los que me están ayudando. I'm very thankful because they are providing some support. Les agradecería que me ayudaran, por favor. Muchas gracias.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Okay, so briefly, her name is Reina.
Reina Martinez.
Reina Martinez.
Estoy aquí.
She received a sixty-day notice, en mi acuerdo. I'm a single parent.
Y necesito ayuda porque no tengo a dónde irme.
I need help. I don't have a place to live.
Por eso estoy en la organización.
I am a member of ACE, and they are helping me through this difficult time.
Les agradecería a todos que nos ayuden, porque no soy yo sola, somos muchos.
And I also would like to ask you for your help. It's not just me, there are many people who are in this situation.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers will be Claude Reed, Gerson Sanchez, Blanca Sinclair, and Roger Rojo.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Blanca Sinclair. Yo vivo en la ciudad de Glendale, California. Estoy viviendo en el mismo apartamento por treinta y siete años.
One moment, so for the translator.
Testing. Can you hear me?
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Blanca Sinclair. Yo vivo en la.
Good morning. My name is Blanca Sinclair.
Yo vivo en la ciudad de Glendale, California.
I live in Glendale, California.
Tengo treinta y ocho años viviendo en el mismo apartamento en el cual pagaba 550 dólares.
I have been in the same apartment for thirty-five years. I used to pay 500 dollars.
Pero hace un año el landlord falleció, y pues conocí a la organización de ACE, y conocí a la licenciada Elena Pop.
I met Elena Pop from ACE.
La cual habló con el abogado de mi nuevo landlord.
She spoke to the new, to the lawyer.
Y hizo que no me subieran el incremento de la renta a 1,800 dólares de 550 dólares que pagaba.
They wanted to raise my rent from 500 to 1,800 dollars. But she helped me with, to deal with this issue.
Habló con el abogado de mi, de mi nuevo landlord, pero ahora él ha empezado y me ha aumentado 950 dólares.
She talked to the landlord's attorney, but now they want to raise my rent 800 dollars.
Y las personas que están envueltas enfrente quisiera tener todos los nombres de ustedes, lamentablemente, pues no puedo recordarlos uno a uno. Quisiera agradecerles lo que pueden hacer por mí, porque de una manera u otra voy a parar en la calle. Yo no trabajo, soy retirada, y mi, y mi.
And I'm sorry, I don't know each one of you by name, but I would like to thank to each and one of you, and I would appreciate any help that you can give me. I don't have a place, I will not have a place to live. I will end up living on the street. I am this, I'm unemployed, and I don't have any income, any more income.
Thank you. Thank you, your time is up. Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, good morning. My name is Gerson Sanchez. I live in the city of Van Nuys. We currently rent from Woodman Park Apartments. Monday last week, we received, this apartment building has eighty, about eighty units, and we all receive. received a letter with a 60-day notice to vacate. There's not even an option to stay. And if, the reason they're using is that they're rebuilding or remodeling the apartment, and anyone after that process is done wants to come back, they can. However, it's not guaranteed that we're going to be able to get the same unit or get a unit at all. They're taking advantage of the new ordinance that's going to kick in until January, so that they're trying to kick everybody out. And again, thank you, everybody, for the council members for bringing this to this meeting, and I really urge you to please pass. It's not just these 80 families of this one building. It is all across, you know, the city of L.A. that this is taking place, so please, here are cries for help, and thank you so much.
Good morning, city council. Hi, my name is Claude Reed, and I'm a member of ACE, and I thank you for giving me permission to speak today. My concerns are that I asked for you all to vote in favor of all the motions. I was once living on Skid Row, and I would just get up and some told me just walk down to city hall and just sit in the council meeting. So I met someone in the city council room here named Bonbon, and she introduced me to ACE. Now, organization like this, they gave me a place to live. I'm not homeless anymore, and I have a nice place. And again, I ask that you vote in favor of all the motions. Thank you, city council.
Thank you. Karina Soto, to be followed by Becky Dennison, Sergio Vargas, and Lupita Gonzalez. Any of you in the room?
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Lupita González.
Good morning. My name is Lupita González.
Soy organizadora de inquilinos de Alianza de Californianos para el Poder de la Comunidad.
I work for ACE.
Y también soy inquilina.
As an organizer, and I'm also a tenant.
Vengo a pedirles a todos los concejales y al alcalde que voten a favor de estas mociones. Tenemos una emergencia en nuestra ciudad. Vamos a ser la capital de los desamparados si permitimos que los dueños saquen a todas estas familias.
I am here to ask all of you and the mayor to vote in favor of all these proposals, measures, so that we can do something about the housing crisis. If we don't do this, if you don't vote in favor, we are going to end up with a lot more people on the streets. We are in the middle of a crisis right now.
Estamos viendo todos los días edificios completos que están recibiendo noticias de 60 días, y no importa que estén en el sur, en el norte, en el este, en el oeste, en el valle, están por todos lados.
It's not only in one place. Everywhere, everywhere, people are receiving 60-day notices throughout the city.
Por eso es que les estoy urgiendo que voten a hoy, no mañana, porque a hoy es que necesitamos actuar. Necesitamos a hoy.
I am urging to vote yes today. Please vote in favor today. Don't wait until tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hello. My name is Sergio Vargas. I'm an organizer with ACE. I want to thank Corinne Price, O'Farrell, and Martinez for putting these motions right now because it's urgent. We are seeing rent gouging, and we are seeing 60-day notices happening everywhere. So we, I encourage you guys to vote on this today because we need to save the homes of all these folks around L.A. Thank you so much.
Becky Dennison, Lupita Gonzalez, Joe Delgado, Elena Pop. Any of you in the room?
I want to focus on the urgency. There are so many housing rights motions already languishing in committee and languishing in the housing department and languishing with the city attorney's office. This has to be voted on today. It needs to be pulled out of the committee process. We need an ordinance written by next week. There are people who will face eviction November 1st based on new rent increases, and there are people who are already in eviction proceeding based on notices that were filed, that were served during the time that the state law was being debated. It is outrageous that we have a lawyer who, that is basically greed getting around the law, and the city council has the power to stop that. We also have some technical corrections. This is the first time in my life that I'm asking a council member to do a little less than he's trying to do, change the no fault to no cause, because otherwise we might run afoul of some Ellis Act issues. And then there's a couple of other technical issues that we'd like to talk to the council office about so that we make sure it passes through quickly and isn't challenged. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Joe Delgado. I'm with ACE. I want to thank councilmember Price, O'Farrell, and Martinez for moving with urgency on this, and I want to tell the story quickly of Señor Mansano who lives at 4040 Hoover Street. The gentleman used to live in the area of the convention center before they moved, the city moved them to the current apartment that they're at now. He cares for his wife who's suffering from Alzheimer, so he couldn't be here today. But he's a Section 8 tenant who is also seeing massive increases in his rent. He has until December to move or pay the new market rate that his new landlord is giving them. He is a perfect example of, that building is a perfect example of everything that's wrong right now with the housing crisis. You have a mix of very low-income tenants, veterans, you have Mr. Mansano and his wife. These folks are the most vulnerable, and we need to make sure that we're protecting them. So thank you for moving this with urgency and bypassing the committee.
My apologies to additional individuals that signed up, but we've done about 20 minutes. I think we have the general idea, and so we're going to start with council members. Councilmember Martinez. Ms. Martinez, if you'd like to begin.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I want to first thank my colleagues, Mitchell Farrell and Mr. Price, for your advocacy on this issue, as well as so many of our colleagues here on the city council who have been very, very instrumental in making sure that people who find themselves in this situation get the proper notices and make sure they're protected. I don't have to tell you what my district looks like. I think you've heard from my constituents, either from Panorama City or Van Nuys, and the hard-working people that I represent every day. I cannot imagine someone who's living paycheck to paycheck, hour to hour, to just make the minimum to be able to pay their rent every single month. God forbid any of them end up in the hospital with a sick child. God forbid you're sick. God forbid there's an emergency that happens in your family. God forbid somebody dies, because it even costs money to die these days. God forbid you have any of these issues come up. You're out on the streets. You're out on the streets immediately because you won't be able to make your rent. You know, I don't represent a district that has luxury housing. We represent a district of hard-working people, the very people that we pride ourselves to ensure that they're making this city work every single day. And for this, this issue of rent gouging to now lay in our hands, I mean, you basically, between the time that this bill goes into effect in January, there is no protection whatsoever for landlords not to increase your rent and have just cause to evict you within 60 days. Because if that's all it takes, all they need to do is notify you for 60 days and just cause is good enough to say, if you're not paying your rent, if you're not meeting your obligation of paying your rent, you're out on the streets. So when we talk about, you know, our sidewalks full of, full of people who are living on our sidewalks, we're talking about millions of dollars that it's taking to build affordable housing or temporary housing for our homeless individuals, but you see this sea of people here who get up every single day, work two or three jobs a day to make your rent. To think of the fact that an emergency or somebody who's trying to rent gouge you is going to put you out in the streets, it is cheaper to keep you in your homes than it is to build affordable housing these days. That's what it's come down to. We need to ensure, and I've said this over and over again, I'll continue to say it, if we cannot find a way or the means to keep a single mom who's holding down two jobs to put food on her table and pay her rent, if we cannot keep her in her home, then we have failed. We have failed, and we have to find solutions. Members, I have a motion to call on a moratorium on rent increases and evictions related to rate increases. It's very simple. We need to ensure, we need to find solutions and ensure that people can stay in their homes and that we're not being, people are not being taken advantage between now and the time that AB, that AB 1480 goes into effect in January. What those solutions are, is what I'm waiting for the city attorney's office to come up with. It is our obligation and our sense of urgency to ensure that families don't end up on the street. What I want to add is an additional, an additional instruction to my motion, and it reads as follows. I move that H Sid and CLA report back on the status of a robust eviction prevention program that includes a detailed timeline and plan for citywide reach. The report should also include recommendations on how the city could expand prevention efforts, such as the creation of an emergency rent relief program for vulnerable city residents who do not meet loss's requirements for homeless services. This is just, this is urgent, and I ask for your I-vote.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I want to talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts of the new bill signed one week ago today, AB 1482. So that bill was signed by the governor one week ago today. One week from today, we could have this emergency moratorium on no-fault evictions in place in the law of the land in the city of Los Angeles. And I'm going to, I'm going to talk about how we can get there, but it's going to require very fast action, but I know that this council is capable of that. As I mentioned, it was one week ago today that Governor Newsom signed AB 1482, the Tenant Protections Act of 2019, which was specifically designed to address a key clause of our state's affordable housing crises by preventing rent gouging and arbitrary evictions. And you just heard from many, many speakers that talks, has talked about since one week, hundreds and hundreds of families are getting evicted because of this 60-day requirement that the state allows. And that's going to continue unless we act really fast. The act becomes effective not until January 1st of 2020, establishing the statewide law to protect renters in non-rent stabilized housing. That's housing built before 2005 in this particular instance with this particular law. The humanitarian crises of homelessness and displacement of lower-income renters in our city comes at a time when 60% of the city's residents are renters. 58% of renters are what's called rent burdened. They pay over 30% of their income for rent. One-third of renters pay over 50% of their income for rent. That means they don't really have enough money for food, transportation, and the basic necessities. That's the rent burdened situation that we're already living with in Los Angeles. About 76% of multifamily units in the city are covered by the city's current rent stabilization ordinance. Those are structures built before 1979, and we still are brushing up against Costa Hawkins every time we talk about affordability in Los Angeles. That still needs to be revised despite this new law, which is more good than bad, but we still have to revise Costa Hawkins to help the city of Los Angeles. There are, there are currently no renter protections for approximately 138,000 households in our city. Just multiply that times the amount of people who live in those 138,000 households, and then you're talking about hundreds of thousands of Los Angeles renters that are under direct threat of losing their homes within 60 days. That's the humanitarian crises we're talking about here. Rapidly rising real estate values give landlords an incentive to evict long-term, lower-income tenants so they can raise rents and attract wealthier tenants, compounding the displacement crises that L.A. is already facing in advance of the implementation of the Tenant Protections Act. In today's competitive real estate market, housing advocates are reporting an increase in harassment by landlords in order to push tenants to voluntarily move out. An estimated 30,000 evictions, 30,000 evictions take place in the city of L.A. each year already, and there is already evidence that in the wake of approval of the Tenant Protections Act, AB 1482, no-fault eviction notices and threats of eviction are escalating, which we've heard about just today here in council. Housing Community Investment Department, H Sid, reports a surge of calls and inquiries from community advocates and tenants facing sudden eviction notices. And one prominent eviction attorney is on record as advising property owners at a trade show to quickly issue no-fault eviction notices to tenants who pay low rents. And some landlords are listening, and they're doing that. Landlords should not be able to evict tenants in good standing simply to avoid the protections against rent gouging the new law would provide. Therefore, it is absolutely crucial that the city implement new strategies to keep people housed, which is why I'm requesting, along with my co-introducer, Mr. Corinne Price, and many, much support on this council, an emergency ordinance to put a temporary moratorium on no-fault evictions for rental units built before January 1st, 2005, effective through the end of this year, December 31st, 2019. This is an urgent, time-sensitive situation. The act, as I mentioned, was signed into law one week ago today. This temporary moratorium put in place expeditiously would provide much-needed protection to many of our most vulnerable residents. We request the city attorney to submit the ordinance immediately and for council to move it through the process in an expedited manner. Now, here's how we do this. We approve this emergency moratorium today. The city attorney begins drafting a very simply but clearly worded ordinance, gets it back to council by the end of this week. Our chair, Mr. Sadio, would waive it out of his housing committee, write to city council so we could vote on it this coming next Tuesday. We could then make it the law of the land, and I think if we really want to stop any delay in adopting this ordinance, because if we, if we do cause further delay, can you imagine the harm and the further displacement of the very people we're trying to help? So colleagues, I urge an urgent I-vote on this moratorium, and I would request the city attorney's office to move very quickly in drafting this ordinance, get it back to us by the end of the week. We waive it out of housing committee. It comes to a vote to this council one week from today so we can put it into effect. Thank you.
Mr. Price. Okay. Mr. Price.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this issue hits close to home for many of us, and it's something I take very personally, so I want to stand in solidarity with my colleagues, Renee Martinez and Mitchell Farrell and others around this horseshoe who understand the importance and the urgency of a moratorium on unjust evictions. Last week, more than a dozen individuals in my district made calls, expressing concerns that are in face of evictions. We heard from tenants in one building who had rent hike more than 150% within the last year alone, 150%. This includes a senior citizen on Section 8 who had been living in that particular building for three decades and now is facing the harsh reality of eviction. To make matters worse, he was displaced when the convention center was built over 30 years ago. We don't want this to continue to be a trend for Los Angeles. It also includes a city of L.A. employee who's raising her three young daughters in our community and is trying to keep her head above water. We also- We also have a grandmother living, a grandmother living with her granddaughter and her great-great-granddaughter, who's exhausting her savings in order to cover the rent increases. That's three generations currently being affected by this crisis. Colleagues, we can't allow massive rent increases and unjust evictions to just happen anymore. The city needs to implement new strategies to keep more people from falling into homelessness. Don't you agree? All right. I applaud the governor. I applaud the governor when he signed A B four eighty-two last week, which was historic. It gave much-needed rental protection to millions of Californians, but not until January the first. We did not fully anticipate that landlords would take measures to fight against A B fourteen eighty-two in the worst possible way, by trying to evict tenants who had done nothing wrong. Members, we need to move expeditiously to approve this ordinance for the sake of our families and our communities. We can't waste any more time. I'd also ask that we take action on the homelessness prevention program that I introduced recently, which will provide rental assistance for those at risk of losing their homes. We need to stand together, colleagues, to protect L.A. tenants until the state bill takes effect. I urge you to vote aye on this emergency moratorium. The time is now. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio. Okay, let's keep it, let's come on, no, 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 no. Come on, let us move forward. I think you've got a bunch of folk that recognize this is an issue and who want to take care of it. Let us do it. Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours. Okay, let me move to Mr. Rue, and then we'll get to Mr. Sadio, I'll call you next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really want to thank my colleagues Martinez, O'Farrell, and Price, because I am so glad to see this motion introduced today, and I give it my wholehearted support. I strongly support A B fourteen eighty-two, as many of you, many of you do as well, to stop the reckless rent gouging and keep vulnerable renters in their homes. What some landlords have chosen to do in light of this bill becoming law is nothing short of shameful. We live in an affordable housing crisis that is unprecedented. Price gouging in this environment flies in the face, flies against the spirit of this law and proves just how badly we need to cap rent prices and end no-fault evictions. Unfortunately, we know that this is nothing new. Up and down my district, I have fought landlords trying to kick out long-term tenants for no good reason. 6565 Fountain in Hollywood, 2965 Waywardly Drive in Silver Lake, The Cove Apartments in Las Felas, the list goes on and on and on. I'm glad that we, to see us move closer to closing this loophole in the state's new law, and I hope that we move as quickly as possible to stop these evictions and rent increases. I strongly encourage an eye vote today, and thank you so very much.
Mr. Corret, oh, no, no, no. Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, it seems to me that the, the sentiment and the case for the moratorium has been well-established. It seems that we're all experienced here to understand that there are those rare, but one would be too many nefarious elements in the developer community who would try to exploit or take advantage of this scenario. We've been dealing in our efforts in Chinatown to deal with some developers who have that type of nefarious attitude in terms of trying to exploit loopholes in the law. So there's no question that this is the direction that we want to go in. The question I ask, Mr. President, that given the incredible sense of urgency, the incredible stress, the case that has been articulated, what prevents us from doing this now? In other words, I'm happy to waive this, I'm happy to waive this out of my, my committee, that's not an issue, but, but what prevents us, because this is a simple matter, we are very clear about what we're trying to do. We're trying to be very preventive in terms of somebody exploiting loopholes and time periods from today and the effectuation of the law. And so it doesn't seem to me we're working with Alana Pop, who's an attorney and works in this field. It doesn't seem to me that we shouldn't just write the language now. There are cleaner proposals that are coming from the tenants' rights community, and that we, as an extraordinary matter that has been well-articulated, can take that action now.
Okay, Mr. Mr. City Attorney, if we could get some kind of response, some guidance from, from your office on this.
Sure. Right now, we don't have an ordinance before us, and we should certainly not be drafting a complex ordinance on the fly. There actually are--
No, 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 come on, come on now.
There are actually a lot of complicated legal issues in here, and if we get it wrong, we will create more problems in the long run.
No, please, let us, we're trying to work through this. Let us do that. Stop, Mr. City Attorney, stop for a second.
We absolutely, remember, my office also has to approve this thing in terms of form and legality. You have got to give us a little while to draft this thing. We will do it expeditiously, but we can't just pull out the code and start drafting things right now. That's a recipe for disaster. We should not do that.
Okay, so now, and then I'm going to let Mr. Sadio end his questions, but please, please, please. What is your time assessment where it relates for us to put this together?
Well, I believe that we were talking about the end of the week and the beginning of next week.
So in your opinion, that is feasible?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping we can get it back sooner, but, but I, I think, given, especially since we're on holiday, it's realistically the end of this week.
No, 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 wait, 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 wait.
The next council meeting is Tuesday.
Okay, everybody, everybody, please, we're not going to accomplish anything doing this kind of back and forth. We're trying to figure this out. Allow us to do that. We're trying to come up with a way to do this as quickly as possible. So you ended it where, Mr. City Attorney?
So my office will be working with the movers to draft legislation. Hopefully, we'll have that by the end of this week so that we can present it to council next week.
Okay, let's, let, let--
The next council meeting is Tuesday, so that's as fast as we can do it.
Mr. City Attorney, let us do this. Incorporate Mr. Sadio into that work group. Make sure that there's some kind of update that, that, that we can get to make sure that on the next available council day, that we will be in a position to take action. And the only way that we can do that smoothly, without any hiccups, do the right thing and accommodate our people, is if you communicate with the authors and the chair of the committee, okay?
And we shall do that.
Okay, so Mr. Sadio, back to you, and then I'm going to go to Mr. Corretts.
Well, just let me say this. I don't think it's that complicated. I think-- I, I don't think it's that complicated, but I, but I respect you, and, but I want to be clear, and I think, Mr. President, it's very clear that this is the opportunity for the council to be very clear where we stand on this matter specifically. And there is a date in which the governor signed this bill, and for having been a legislator, there are reasons why bills don't go into effect immediately, although some do, and this, this would have been a perfect case for that. Let me suggest that it, that we be very clear that the date begins in terms of whatever action that the city attorney designs, that that action goes back to the date that the governor signs this bill, and that it goes into effect retroactively.
So that's actually one of the legal issues I was referring to. It is unclear to me right now whether we can make it retroactive or not, right? So--
I just want to be clear about the directive of the council.
Yes, understood.
And the directive of the council, or at least the directive of my, or the intent of my office, is that it is a retroactive action to the signature of the governor so that we make sure that no one who wishes to, to exploit this time period between his signature and the first of the year has that opportunity, and that it goes backward to invalidate any actions taken by any of these nefarious developers. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, so let us be clear, Mr. City Attorney, that the council, the council's instructions, the council's intention is that the next time we convene, it is our expectation to vote on this ordinance.
Understood.
So, whoa, I, so I just want to add to that, that this council, if it must, it will create its own ordinance, because the next time we meet, we are going to vote on this. So we want to partner with you, but I say that to make sure it is crystal clear where it relates to the sense of urgency on this council.
So I, I have one question or suggestion. So I know that Mr. O'Farrell's motion, when it was introduced on Friday, is in terms of prospective stuff, and should I take this that you asking us, I suppose this would be an amending motion, to include a retroactive application if it's legally available?
It is our, and, and, and trust me, several members of the council have already spoken. It is our direction to you to create something that gives the maximum amount of, amount of protection, which would include some kind of retroactive, you know, language as well. So with that said, let me move on to Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot's already been said, but I want to also speak to the urgency of this. It needs to be clear, the person that started this ball rolling is an attorney who claims that he evicts more people than anyone else in the city of Los Angeles. And this, and this was done, I'm, I'm not going to say his name, but, but, shh, but clearly people have listened, and if we don't act immediately, other landlords are watching. And if the people that have served evictions can get away with it, and we don't put our foot down this minute and say no, it's not going to be dozens of buildings, it's going to be hundreds, maybe thousands of buildings, because they'll see that success. We need to put an end to this right away, and we know-- we know because of Costa Hawkins, when the RSO unit becomes vacant, it instantly becomes luxury market-rate housing. So there's literally no place for any of these folks to go. How many hundreds or thousands of new homeless people will be created during these couple of months? Everything that we've done could be wiped out, and we could wind up with, with literally thousands of people on the street. So I think we can't take a day more than we have to. I, I'm somewhere between Mr. Sadio and the city attorney. I would love to see us find a way to take a few hours and come back and do this today. At the same time, I would also warn you, if we screw this up, we could be paying for it with the housing of the thousands of people that we're trying to protect. So if, if I were told that we could get everyone to huddle, and we could come back this evening and do this ordinance, I would do it. If, if not-- if, if not at a minimum, I would say to the city attorney that we can't work on this nine to five as we normally would. This should be a round-the-clock thing with, with, with every bright legal mind we have to get this done well and to get this done fast, we can't afford not to do this as quickly as possible, and we can't afford not to do this as well as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like everybody else, I rise to support the motions by Ms. Martinez and Mr. O'Farrell and, and Mr. Price. You know, Greta Thunberg, the young teenager from Europe who's been talking about climate change, uses the expression, "The house is on fire." Our house is on fire, and we need to put that fire out. So I very strongly support the, the proposals before us, and I, I need to commend Ms. Martinez in particular for what I thought were just absolutely brilliant, spot-on comments. You, you made this the real and the human issue that it is, and you made this a choice between protecting people and scurrilous landlords and their lawyers exploiting people. And this situation is too real and too severe for us to allow exploitation, and it's also too real and too, and too severe for us to participate in exploitation by, by, by grandstanding. We need to do this fast, but we need to do this right, and we need to do this fast. If, if, if we get this wrong, we are offering all of you bullshit, false hopes, and this is too important and too real. So we need to make sure we get this right. So if you can get it back in a day, great, but we need this as soon as possible, and we need it right, because we cannot allow these people to be evicted. And, and honest to God, between now and Tuesday, if we vote on it, hundreds, if not thousands of people will be served with their eviction notices. So as soon as we can get this, we need it fast, we need it right, and as I said, we need it fast. But this is bigger than just this one issue, and then, and there are other issues as well. We need to be moving on, on, on a number of different ways to protect tenants, adjust cause protections. I, I would ask, Mr. President, in addition to voting on this Tuesday or whenever we vote, I, I think we should set aside a day before Thanksgiving for us to do nothing but rental issues. And there's a number of different proposals that are, that are, they're in various committees that we schedule them all so we can have a day of action on renters' issues, treat this as the urgent crisis that it is, and, and be able to vote on, on any other tenant protection measures that we have in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. One, there's a minor amendment to the motion correcting the date on the moving clause, and that is item sixty to January first, 2005. Right now, the moving clause is January first, 2006, so if, if that could be read into the record. And in relation to this making the date retroactive to one week ago when the governor signed the bill, in order to make null and void all the eviction notices that sound like they're numbering in the thousands already, would, and I ask this rhetorically, and this is something that we should really dial down on, it seems to me that we, we can make findings in this emergency declaration that this universe of greedy landlords who have issued these eviction notices, causing incredible harm to our city's population and people who are struggling at the margins already, could we not make findings, emergency findings, that in the city of Los Angeles, we could, in fact, make this retroactive and make all of those eviction notices that have been sent out since Tuesday of last week null and void, and wouldn't that be legally withstandable? I, I ask that because-- I, I ask that because I'd like that to be explored in this discussion that will happen immediately after this council hearing. That seems to me like a legal position that we could defend, and as Mr. Bonin just said, we need to move fast, we need to do this right, and if that involves a little bit of risk, then we need to explore what that could look like as well, as long as we feel that we could stand up. Because I think that thousands of people receiving eviction notices and a percentage of those families becoming homeless within two months, that's an emergency in and of itself, and that's a real problem. And then, so, and then lastly on that, I could see a universe, Streffan, wherein if we, if the city attorney can draft legislation that is crystal clear, legally withstandable, within a couple of days, President Wesson could call the council back this week, ready to vote the moment the city attorney's office is comfortable with the ordinance. So, so that we wouldn't even have to wait for one full week, if that is the scenario. In other words, I just want to make all of these pathways, these possible pathways, I want to see where all of them may lead, so that we can move this forward even more quickly, efficiency, and again, legally withstandable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Coretts, you wanted to clarify something?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure, as a fine point, that we deal not only with evictions, but constructive evictions, because some people will just file an eviction notice, but some people have been raising people's $800 rents to $3,000, and that is just another way to evict people. So we need to deal with both types of evictions, otherwise, we won't really be able to halt any of this practice.
Okay, so it's my understanding, Madam Clerk, that we have two items before us, we have to vote on them individually, is that correct?
That is correct. Both items have been amended.
Then let's go with item 60 as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now, now, let's vote on item 61 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
You know what, okay, let's just to dot the i's, cross the t's, let's do this super fourth with, urgent fourth with, urgent super duper fourth with, and let's, uh, let's vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, if you could. You have items 1 through 1G, and then you have 28, 54, and 55.
So, we're talking about these rent increases, and I just fully agree with this, because we're talking about number one, and all of the liens that are going on, and we've got all these properties that keep coming in, and they keep displacing everybody. They jack up the rents, they kick people out first, and then they jack up the rents, and then we have people having to spend $3,000 a month on something that they used to spend $800 on, and it's bullshit. So, I mean, you cut down the menu today, I'm, I'm really not happy about it, I've got a lot of stuff to say, and you're flying through stuff, like, we, you know, I see that we've got urgent forthwith on this item agenda, but, you know, at the same time, I don't see any urgency with, you know, Mr. Krikorian's not here today, and we've got items that are just flying through on the agenda for stuff that's burning down the city. You know, I just, this technology, you guys aren't doing anything about it, but yet we're like, you know, I, I completely agree with the rentals, but like, you know, there's stuff too that needs to be taken care of that you guys aren't putting high up on the totem pole. You know, we're talking about, I just, we're vacating Oxford, and I see that we're not, you know, we aren't being very smart on some of these things. So, you know, there's zone changes, and, I mean, I'm just really upset about this street lighting shit. It's this 5G that's really, it's, it's causing all the fires, man, and you guys aren't doing anything about it, you're just letting us put all this through like it's nothing. You know, I just, but to go back to the liens, you know, we got an item going for an easement for the sewer in Crenshaw, and I, I just agree that there is just a lot of shit going Salary changes and studying wages, that, I think that should be a big topic, is that if we are to increase the rents, then we should be also increasing the wages, because that's the problem that we have, is that the wages are staying really low, but the rents are increasing, and it's basically, what's happening is, we've got Chinese investment coming in, and they're buying up all our property, and then they're jacking up the prices so that we can't afford it, and we have to work all day just to pay for our rent.
Excuse me, Mr., uh, Mr. Schmidt, let me just hold your time, and if I can please ask the members of the public to please exit as quietly as possible, we're trying to finish up our meeting. Thank you, go ahead, Corey.
So like I was saying, we have foreign investment buying up all our property, and they're jacking up the rents of everything, and it's forcing us to work all day long and not enjoy life just to pay the rent. And it ties into everything we were just spending about an hour or so talking about. So for my general public comment, I want to just speak on, I've been helping some of the local homeless in my community, and-
Hold on for just a second, can you please put in one minute on the clock? Thank you. Go ahead.
So there's, I've been, I've been helping the local homeless, and I don't know where Bonin is, I was going to ask him specifically, but I know that there's discretionary funds, and if we could just get, she, you know, I have someone that's car is broken down, and we need a mechanic, and I've heard that there's an in-house mechanic, I'm trying to get through to the right person to get some help in our neighborhood. And then the last thing I want to talk-
Excuse me, ma'am, I need you to sit down, he has this one minute of general public comment. Ma'am, ma'am, this is your, this is your final warning, I need you to stop interrupting this meeting. Go ahead, Corey, finish up your-
She's right, she should, she should have been able to speak earlier-
And she will, can you just finish up your comments?
Okay, so my last that I was going to say was, because I keep speaking about stuff that's controversial, I had my car broken into and all my shit stolen out of it, and I just want to talk about the auto companies, and that there is just backdoors to all of our cars, where anybody, if they have the ability to capture your code from your keyfob, you can walk right into your car. So we need to, we need to fix that shit.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Posh Tyenol, are you here, Posh? Is anybody here with that name? How about Mike Greenspan? Mike, are you still here? Uh, Mr. Greenspan, you're speaking on item 1 and item 28, and your general public comment.
What about item 16? It's up there too. It was waived in committee. Item 16? Uh, item 16?
No, no, item 16, the hearing was held in committee, it's not open for public comment.
Okay, the liens, I guess somebody's done something wrong, and we're going to penalize them. Hey, what's a couple thousand here and there? I mean, I guess, you know, my favorite council member, Mr. Coretts, thinks that money grows on trees, so let's just pick off a couple thousand dollars off the trees and pay the city the liens, after all. The, now, item, item 28 is, is about the rescue animals, and it's not a bad idea. There are a couple of things that we could probably do, I think they're friendly amendments, one of which, I know we have a culture that eats dogs, and it's not a good thing, perhaps Mr. Rue could actually do a public service message similar to the ones I used to see in the deep south about anti-moonshine commercials, we could have anti-dog-eating commercials as a public service. It's not a bad idea, it would discourage a culture, I'm not going to mention who, from eating animals, which, you know, we can't be in denial about such a thing if it's happening widespread, and we could take our commercials and send them overseas.
So, so Mr. Greenspan, item 28 is-
Also, because we're talking about animals-
No, Mr. Greenspan, item 28 is about street lighting, please get on the topic.
I'm sorry, okay. Well, we've got some streetlights that have not been done properly, and they're in Mr. Krikorian's district, and I actually have a case called in September 12th, 1-1447031691. The shows start on September 12th, those shows will be canceled by the time, and this thing will still be going, and they give their pussies to get into Hollywood. Now, let us talk about the new role of the UCLA football team. The UCLA football team, I've got a great idea for them, and we could actually make some money on them, believe it or not, we could actually, and now I always talk about transferring funds from the UCLA football budget into the homeless community, a lot of which are over there in Westwood, but my idea is, it's, it's called a professional beat-up team. What do I mean? Well, a lot of big-name schools with big budgets like to hire patsy teams, and they beat them up for homecoming, and they give them nice six-figure payouts. University of Nevada Reno got $700,000 from Vanderbilt, they got the money, so instead of the Bruins being a drain, they could be kind of the professional bitches of college football and be the beat-up teams for the good teams in the good conferences like the Big Ten, the Southeastern Conference. I mean, what better way? I mean, how else could I describe the UCLA chickens? Fuck, 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 fuck! They suck!
I agree with the person in the audience, but please don't shout out and interrupt our meeting. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler, and you have your three minutes on the items that you signed up for, plus a minute under public comment.
What the fuck? There we get down to the liens and the bloodsuckers' liens. 1B, that's that bloodsucker current price sucking the blood for $2,848. Forgive the liens, forgive the poor people in your poor district, even the Jews over here are offended by 1B, it's even too much for them. Then we get to the biggest bloodsucker, the Herb Wesson bloodsucker on 1C for $2,547, that's on a Korean family. Oh, wait a minute, fuck that, affirm that lien. Then we get to 1D. 1D, the Korean persecutor David Rue taxing the Jews on 3837 North Sherview Lane. How can we allow a Korean to be a bloodsucker over the Jews in Sherman Oaks? We can't allow it. September 17th, we all came down here, and we spoke to the council member staff on that lien. I said, "Yukusu, yukudigbada," and they said, "Yukadigshonda," and that means it was a $500 agreement. We agreed to waive it for $500. Now where is the motherfucking amendment to 1D? Where is that David Rue? David Rue, where are you? You up your ass, that's where you are, you ain't nowhere here, so forgive the lien. Then we get to the bloodsuckers on 26, more bullshit by the biggest bullshitter, that would be the Weezer District 14. CD 14 in calamity, CD 14 with our leadership, CD 14 with FBI agents on every block? And that's why they want more lights, to look for more payoffs, because their cameras are 2D, and they need a 4D and a 5G. But you see, a 5G ain't nothing for you, foe, so you have to go and tax the neighborhood for the money. I say no on 26, bill the FBI on 26. You may lay, send the lien over, and again, Mr. Harris Dawson told me the address, 11,000 Clusterfield Road, West Virginia, that's right, that's where Marquisi regularly reports to, to stay out of federal parole on the record, that's right. Now the generalized comments, I heard cunts all over the radio on the weekend, Big Fat Fucking Monica, I didn't hear about Big Fat Nury, but I'm going to tell John Lee a little story. John Lee, no one heard your voice on the press conference, because as soon as you were ready to speak, KNX 1070, the racist fucking radio network, cut you off. They did not allow the Korean-American from the 12th district to be heard on the radio. We heard from Tarasus, we heard from Fat Monica, we heard from the mayor, we heard from Nury, shit, we even heard from Alexis, she says, "I drive a Lexus, I'm a Lexus, and I get money for the niggas." But as soon as John Lee was up, they said, "We're cutting off." I think John Lee should sue KNX for racism. Fuck you, KNX, fuck you!
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Mr. Herman?
No less troubling are these liens, unconstitutional liens that make people homeless for measly $2,000 like in CD 4. You heard about the racist Korean at 3837 North Sherview Drive? You nigger ain't driving shit, and you got $2,368.59 putting some poor American out of their home, simply because you're abating. And look at that other fool with the big F, 190160S for stupid 79 in CD 8. This is not about amoeba, fool, this is about a lien, a lien that violates every American's dream to own and live in a goddamn place no other called home, fool. So $2,516.70, Mr. Dawson, is very much in my eyes unconstitutional retaliatory harassment against any individual American, black, brown, or Asian, that has a lien by this fucked-up department called Building and Safety. You got it? You heard it? Now you know, fool. Then look at item CD 9. Why isn't that fool up there saying that I'm not on topic? You goddamn know what 55 and 54 is all about, but I don't talk about Sadio, I talk about CD 10, I talk about the fat pig installing street banners when we need to encourage the neighborhood to support our belief that we need rent control- to support our belief that we need rent control to installate those street banners on behalf of Measure H and HHH. $1.2 billion, but yet we're investing in fucking streetlights. Ain't that a motherfucker? You see all? You come here so polite, so robust, but our law punishes words. Why do you want to punish words when we're protecting Los Angeles Municipal Code Sections 3x3, 1, 3, 2 for banners on behalf of Trump? Fuck you! The largest city in America with the first fuck asshole on page 9812, United States versus Baghdazarian, 0950529. Let this country be fucked for another, another few years of rent control? No! We're gonna fix it now, because you dumbass fools have done nothing, done anything right.
Mr. Herman, stop, stop shouting into the mic.
Who the fuck is talking but me? If they ever make me not defend my country, I will have to carry that rifle and put in my sight, because I respect free speech, not monitoring, not censoring, so on behalf of America and public interest, fuck you!
Mr. Herman, don't shout into the mic again.
I'd also mention that Mr. Spindler is making distracting gestures, walking around the room, doing whatever he can to disrupt the meeting, so this will be your final warning. Uh, next speaker is Ramirez. Such a person here, I don't know. Hong Chu dot K. Yvonne Michelle Autry. And you can speak on 55 and general public comment.
Yes, I'm 55. What is 55? I, I, I'm requested to speak on another. So, um, what I'd like to say is that we need not only affordable housing, but we need to ensure that those of us who are enjoying, which is our right, housing is a human right-
So, Ms. Autry, 55 you signed up for is street banners. If you want to just talk about housing, we can go to general public comment.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I just don't use any more of my time. So, again, we need to ensure, we need to defend and protect the rights, thank you, of the tenants so that we are not being subject to illegal coercion, which is my experience, right, as a Section 8 recipient, gratefully, but renting from Isaac Shomoff, who is using illegal means to coerce and harass residents out of the Alexandria, which is where I currently reside. I've spoken to two or three other residents, some now former residents, because our neighbors had been, my neighbor specifically had been urinating, masturbating on my door. I pepper sprayed him and I was arrested, right? So this is a long arm of Israeli Jewish influence. I'm not anti-Semitic, but this happened to me at the Hayward. The Mexican Hispanic maintenance men tell me that they're under orders and that they are commissioned and they are rewarded for breaking down black women and getting certain ones of us evicted. I think in an effort to raise the rent-to-market rate, this must stop.
Thank you. Now you have your one minute of public comment.
So we need affordable housing, but protection for those who are enjoying the affordable housing.
Thank you, Ms. Autry.
And especially protection against black women.
Thank you.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Autry. Ms. Autry, please don't disrupt the meeting, your time's up.
Okay, you're still talking and disrupting the meeting. I'll, I'll give you one, this is your last warning, otherwise we'll have to remove you. Now we'll go on to item 15? Excuse me, 16. Mr. Blumenfield?
Law and Council meeting. Uh, this is just, this is an item that we've heard a number of times, and it's finally coming back, I think, hopefully for the final time. And it's, it's basically to allow us to use, uh, commercial areas for, for animal rescues. It was a quirk in the law that we weren't able to use, uh, commercial corridors for animal rescues, and it was causing problems. This issue first came to my attention when we had a rescue, Rockin Rescue, in the district was about to be evicted, and yet they were saving hundreds of animals, and we were able to get a special fix for them, but we wanted to make sure that we could create a global fix so that other rescues who are doing important work would be able to be where they'll be most noticed, where people will come and adopt the pets along commercial corridors with appropriate protections for neighboring businesses, et cetera. So, colleagues, I urge your eye vote, and this is an important day to move this item forward. Thank you.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. We could open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote. That item has passed. Back to general public comment, Lottie Schumate.
Good afternoon.
Item 1F and general public comment, so you'll have one minute for each.
Good afternoon. I'm Lottie Schumate, and I'm a registered nurse here in Los Angeles, and I'm very concerned about the homeless population who's all over the city. We purchased an ADU, uh, and we took and converted it for the homeless. In the meantime, the city signed off, and because the Department of Parks and Rec, after everything was completed, says that we owe park and rec fees. Uh, we received this note that the park and rec fees are almost $7,000. And because of this, we cannot get the, uh, permit to occupy that property. Now, we have it for the homeless. It's ready to go. It's been signed off by Building and Safety. However, this park and rec fee, that's almost $7,000, we did not know ahead of time we were going to be obligated for a park and rec fee. I'm here today to see what it is that can be done.
Excuse me, your, your time is up on this item, but I wonder if you could, uh, tell us which council district you live in, maybe-
Council District 8.
So maybe the staff person from, uh, that district can speak with you after you're done. Now you have one minute of general public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, I assume not taking your general public comment. All right, thank you. Is RD Plasher still here? Uh, appears not. Okay, so now we'll vote on item 28. If we could open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
11 ayes.
That item has passed.
And, Mr. President, for the record, that ordinance will be held over to October 22nd.
Thank you. Now, if we're on item 54 as amended?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, for the record, the amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
So we'll open the roll on this item, close the roll and tally the vote.
11 ayes.
That item has passed. Now, item number 55. If we could open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
11 ayes.
That item has passed as well.
And, Mr. President, there is a request on item 1C and 1H to continue those items to November 26.
So those will be continued without objection. All right, let's move on to general public comment. We'll start with Suzette Shaw, to be followed by Richard Castro and Monique Davis.
You see this? It says full of facts. My name is Suzette Shaw. I'm a Skid Row resident. I stayed for the full length of this meeting because I am so appalled. I am so appalled. I am appalled. How dare you? How dare you think you have the right to disrespect me? I signed up three times to speak today. You have shown white privilege in allowing these men three, four freaking times to speak? How dare you? How dare you? Don't you ever speak to me like that again. Now I'm gonna let you know here, I stayed here because I have some things to say. My family right now is going through huge issues. My twin sister lives in Toluca Lake for the last 20 years, 20 years, and her family is going through an eviction because some white folks moved in in the last year and decided that they wanted to move out. It's not because they haven't been paying their rent. 20 years. My, my twin sister is a retired LA Unified School District teacher. Now I want you to know, I sit on the Black People Experiencing Homelessness Ad-Hoc Committee Meet because we have to have an ad hoc committee-
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Because of the fact that there's some-
Thank you for your testimony. Your time is up.
So, sorry. So, no, no, actually, you've got one-
Your time is up.
Ms. Autry, stop shouting from the back of the room. Ms. Autry, you're disrupting the meeting. Ms. Autry, you're disrupting the meeting. So, Mr. President, I suggest we ask Ms. Autry to quietly leave the meeting. Ms. Autry, you've been asked-
Ms. Autry, this is your final warning. If you continue, we'll have to have you removed.
Ms. Autry, you've been ordered to be-
Since you're continuing to disrupt the meeting, Ms. Autry, I think you'll have to be removed as well.
All right, Ms. Autry, you're still disrupting the meeting and you're holding everything up as you shout, as you leave. Please-
And still disrupting the meeting, so we'll wait till she's out. Welcome.
I have not been called, my name has not been called for public comment.
If your name hasn't been called, we still have a long list of people to speak. What's your name?
F O C C, Foxy.
Uh, why don't, why don't we just have you speak now? Just state your name.
Okay. My name is Foxy, F O C C. I'm a poor, dark-skinned, black woman. I'm curious to ask, who is it really that you guys are saying, are saying is going to take care of what these people are complaining about? Who is, who, who is the person or the people that's going to take care of what they're talking about? I'm, I'm curious to ask that. Do, do you know? I mean, 'cause this thing's been going on for, forever, and, I mean, what's it about? Who's taking care of these issues that these people are, you know, these, all these issues that these people are complaining about? Who is it? Is it a person? Is it a group of people? Does anyone know? Are, I mean, is, is that going to get every, get figured out?
Thank you. Your, your time is up.
Yes, thank you.
Richard Castro Jr. Monique Davis. Kendrick Rostad. Marco Juarez. Lex Roman. LaShawn Pensoon. Ina Hankerson. Welcome. You can start.
I can go. Okay, I'm here on behalf of the Ephesus Center. We, the people, will not allow Marquise Dawson, Herb Weston, and other South Law Tombs to attack and close our 20-year-old community and culture center, the Ephesus Center, almost all-black community organizations, oppose Dawson and Weston's Destination Crenshaw Black Business Destruction Genification Project. After refusal of Uncle Tom, Mark Riley Thomas, White Council Person Ruth Gallanter contracted with Brother Jabari to open Ephesus Center 20 years ago, a white woman. Sambo, uh, white woman. Sambo, Uncle Tom, Mark Riley Thomas, Bernard Parks, and Marquise Dawson have not given one penny of assistance to the Ephesus Center. Clearly a disgrace. Now self-serving Marquise Dawson is attacking the, the cultural well-being of the black community with Ephesus Center eviction order to whitewash the community identity with the ridiculous $300 million Destination Crenshaw Genification Project and erect a worthless 120-foot monument at, at the front door.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anchor Patel. Jacob Shepard. Devon Williams. Jacqueline Richards.
This concerns housing in the downtown historic district. It seems that some residents at some of these older hotels have more than, uh, two units, one in one of the hotels and another unit some other place. It's very difficult to tell who's doing this, but, um, the landlords can't see them because some of these units are real big, have over 300 apartments or whatever, and some people come in and they say three days a month, and then they live some other place, 20, 27 other days a month. You have to, more or less, it doesn't happen all the time to everyone, but sometimes, I would estimate, and I might be wrong, at least 10% of some of these hotels have people that don't live there except three days a month, and other 27 days, they, they live some other place. I could be wrong because you can't see everybody all the time, and, but you can kind of guess because the elevators are sometimes full and other times they're empty, so I'm assuming that they're living other places during those times.
Sabrina Johnson?
Hello, Sabrina Johnson, uh, LA Tenants Union and K-Town for All. Uh, I want to first, uh, thank you for considering the motions, uh, from Mr. O'Farrell and Ms. Martinez today regarding putting a stop to rent increases and evictions. Uh, I do want to remind, uh, the council and the city attorney's office that when you're considering this, um, AB 1482 actually does not have very strong protections against no-fault evictions, and so I'm worried that, what you guys are doing is great. In January, some of these landlords that were stopping from evicting, people are just gonna turn around and file evictions again, um, and so if the state of California isn't gonna act on this, uh, you guys need to. And so we need to consider extending those protections beyond January 1st, uh, when you're considering them, because I, my fear is another wave of evictions is going to happen that are allowable under AB 1482. So please, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers that, that signed up but were missed in air? So if you haven't already spoken- already spoken, if you'd come up and state your name, and you have one minute.
Probably good afternoon by now, and thank you for allowing us to speak. We do cross-county food giveaways and-
[singing] Oh Lord, oh Lord, kumbaya.
We need God here. And whether anybody wants to admit it or not, in God, we trust is still on our money, so we need God in here. But we want to bring this statement to you because people are living in cars. The car is the new apartment. You get a, your car is your house note. And now, what is taking place on some places where they do not have the signage correctly, we were trying to apply this to the lighting situation. The lights on, on some, in some areas don't let you know, and you see a lot of people park there. And so, at the end of the day, when we're doing food, but then we get a ticket the next morning, the officer didn't come and say, "Move along" or anything. We had no idea. But some people have lost their RVs and things because of these tickets. We can pay a $73 ticket, but that's not the point. The point is, is that the signage should not be covered by, now, did you, didn't I have a public comment also?
No, no, that was your public comment.
Okay, well, would you guys please take this? And also, there's something here for one of our leaders, Herschel Blimes passed.
Thank you. Your time is up, but please, please state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We actually live in Englewood and in L.A., forgive us. But in the meantime, we are in-
Thank you. Your, your time is up. Thank you.
We're in a crisis district.
Thank you. Your, your time is up. Please. Thank you. Your time is up. That concludes general public comment. Now, item number one, we'll-
And, Mr. President-
Vote on the remaining balance of the items under one.
Yes, and on item one, one eye, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the lien be reduced to $1,069.90 and be confirmed, and all the remaining items can also be confirmed.
Okay, with that being said, please open the roll, close the roll, and tally the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Those items pass. Now, we'll go to the special one. Mr. City Attorney?
So, a motion has been introduced. It relates to the Saddle Ridge Fire. Since the posting of the agenda on Friday, the mayor issued a declaration of local emergency. Per the administrative code, council has seven days in which to approve or disapprove the declaration and to continue the state of emergency if it so chooses. And there's clearly a need to act because if council is on recess Wednesday and Friday, this is the last day within the seven-day window to act. So, we should take two votes on this item. The first is pursuant to Government Code 54954.2 on the findings, and if that passes, then a second vote on the substance of the motion. Yes, and we'll take speakers between the two votes.
We're going to take cards first. Speakers under special one will have one minute, beginning with Wayne Spindler, Mr. Herman, Mr. Sacks, and Mr. Previn after that.
So, yes, I'm against this item. This is known as the Lee Rodriguez Fire. It was caused by transmission lines from your DWP. Everybody knows it. Everybody knows you fucking cunts burnt down all that land. You fucking cunts burnt down all of those houses. You fucking cunts now declare an emergency for what you fucking cunts didn't do, which was maintain the fucking cunt wires of the DWP. You did it again and again, and you keep burning shit and burning shit. That little John Lee was trying to tell everybody on KNX 1070 the truth. He's ready to go to the FBI. Look at that little cocksucker. So, I say, "No, John Gilson Dionce, fuck the DWP."
Mr. Herman, next.
So, we know who started the fire. Yet, the alligators of allegations, lying, corrupted city of Los Angeles, along with the municipal corporations of electricity, DWP know how to lie. Blame it on the homeless people for their encampments. No, you cunts. It was your lines. They got too hot because niggers want to run the AC 24/7. So, the lines got hot. They interacted with the winds, and they created a fire because cunts don't clean brush. Cunts don't clean the hillsides. Cunts don't provide Americans with jobs to do a fucking great job to make America clean and green again. So, now we know John Lee is a true cunt.
Arnold Sacks, Eric Previn, Jacqueline Richards, Corey Schmidt.
This, this is the shit I'm talking about. This is the fucking shit I'm talking about. We're talking about homeless people starting it. We're talking about it's the downed power lines that started it. It's the fucking 5G. This guy's not here. He hasn't been here in a couple of days, actually, and it's because his shit is on the fucking agenda. This stuff that's starting the fires, it's not fire. It's vape. It's not even real fire. It's just, it's hot enough to create combustion. But if you look at the aftermath, I mean, we're talking about updating the fire codes earlier. Can we update the fire code to protect against this shit? Because like, if you look at the evidence, if you go play around in the dirt when the fire's over, go play with it, peel some of the bark off, you'll see the tree's still alive. The outside of the bark is just burnt, and it's combusted. It's bullshit.
Next speaker is Delbra Richardson, to be followed by Mike Greenspan, and that will be our last speaker. Don't see either one, so public comment on that item is closed. First, we'll have a vote on the findings, and then we'll have a vote on the motion itself. So, if we could open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And then, under the actual item itself, Ms. Martinez would like to speak. Okay, and so, we will take the second vote on the motion itself. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item passes. If we could vote to reconsider item number 46, if we could open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we have two public speakers on this item, Corey Schmidt and Pash Toynio.
Is in the audience. I think that's actually Herman. But, okay, so, talking about salaries, and I was mentioning earlier about wages. So, one thing is that we're talking about salaries, and you guys get a healthy salary, for sure, but I'm just, the wages aren't, and, well, I was going to say that there's a lot of vacation time that got put on the agenda last time we were here. That was the thing I was going to bring up. But then, what I was getting to earlier was that our wages aren't increasing with the rents that are going on. So, I really think that we should be considering what we can do to get our wages to increase if we keep jacking up the rates, because otherwise, we're just going to be enslaved by our homes. And then, you wonder why everybody's out on the street, because they can't pay their rent, and they don't want to go anywhere. So, but it's foreign investment buying up all our property, kicking us out.
We, we have only two more speakers, and then this item will be closed. Wayne Spindler, to be followed by Mr. Herman.
Thank you again, late niggas. So, we had salaries. Never get enough money, and I, I subscribe to the Gilbert Sidillo methodology. Get as much as you can and save the least amount. So, that's what I want to do. I don't take the goddamn Marquisie Harris dildo approach. Save too much and get too little. So, I say, give these motherfuckers everything they want, even double it, because ain't nobody here, nobody watching anything, even the FBI is currently at lunch at Del Taco, you niggas, you. So, yes, to the item. Bob Bloomingfield has an amendment to triple the salaries just to see if he can get away with it. I'd say, yeah, fuck yeah.
Mr. Herman?
Time running, just the same way you steal money. Time running. California Family Right Act, bullshit. You don't have no rights. Still $86 million in special adjustments, 2.73 million in pension costs. In addition, 1.25 million in 2019-20. Where the fuck does a politician make that much money for sitting on his fat, bald ass, jacking off, doing nothing? But it's a courtesy. Look at Jose Weisar. He brought the FBI, money laundering, fraud, abuse, and terminating all your livelihoods, because all of you are subjected to a criminal investigation, you fucking corrupted motherfuckers.
That's our last speaker on this item. If we could open the roll on item 46, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item has passed. Madam Clerk, what's left on our agenda?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Announcements? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to announce that our environmental committee will begin at 1:30 this afternoon.
Any other announcements? If not, if we could all rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Sidio?
Yes. Members, I just want to bring to your attention someone from the city family who was lost this weekend, Albert Torres from the, one of the park rangers. Well-known, very popular, 40-year employee, was a leader in homeless outreach, a leader in training, young, future park rangers, a leader in the city in terms of being the face of parks in Wrexon, or Wrexon Park, and just a really well-liked, extremely popular city employee. I, I got to meet him when I came back to, to the city. I ran into him at, over at the park, we're at MacArthur Park, and I recognized him from high school. And he was an extremely popular man. Took that sense of public service from our generation in the 60s and came to work for the city. He spent 40 years of his life serving, and tragically was lost this weekend. 6:00 a.m. Saturday, he was working with LIFD and the efforts around the fires, and took ill from that. And tragically, we, we lost him. He survived by his wife, Cheryl, a former Wrexon Park employee, Elizabeth Torres and his son, a member of BOE, Brian, and also survived by thousands who appreciated his efforts around the park and what he did for the city.
I want to weigh in on, on the loss, the passing of Albert Torres. Chief Torres is someone that I had the pleasure of working with for 17 years. And when he suddenly passed, it took my entire team by surprise because individually, especially in, in my field, my field staff works very closely with Albert on so many issues in, in all of our parks. He was always a constant calming presence, offering education to, to kids, to families, could always talk anyone off of a ledge who was upset about something. He had the unenviable position of dealing with all sorts of issues in our parks, including homelessness, including some of the vending issues, anything that anyone complained about. Albert Torres always struck the right balance in explaining issues and explaining a workable process that could, that all sides could take some solace in. It's because that's who he was. He, he was a beautiful person, a beautiful soul, that was a problem solver. And I know the whole, the whole Department of Recreation of Parks is just devastated. I heard from several of his former colleagues who are now retired when his, his passing was announced, and the police department, emergency response, you name it, everyone knew Chief Torres, because that's the kind of person he was. He was a constant presence at my movies in the park, in Echo Park, was always there with his, his own team of men and women, park rangers. He'll always, in my view, be known as Chief Torres. He was indomitable. He was, he was righteous. He was a beautiful soul, and he just shined from the outside in. And his eyes sparkled because he loved his work, and he loved the city. And I'm so terribly sorry for his loss and his entire family, but this has really brought the entire city family to its knees, because that's the kind of person Albert Torres was. And, and he's left quite a legacy and quite an example for all of us to follow. So, Chief Torres, may you rest in peace.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to join. I suspect that each of us has an Albert Torres story, Albert Torres story to share. And I just, you know, it was, it was devastating to learn of his loss early Saturday morning. But, you know, he served on my homelessness task force. His compassion, his empathy, his example is one that is a tremendous loss to our city, but he, his legacy will live on in what he has exemplified in terms of his passion for his work for park rangers in the city of Los Angeles. And, I mean, we were absolutely devastated to learn of his loss. He, you know, most recently, when we were doing some outreach in the Hanson Dam area as part of the effort that we are now doing with the high-fire hazard severity zones, his relationship with individuals experiencing homelessness, they were responsive to him because of his compassion, because of his empathy, and his, just, he was just a real human being and just understood how to approach these very complicated issues in, in a manner with which he could only do it. And so, it's a tragic loss for the city, family. And I know what he has meant to each of us. We, we've seen the tributes, but it's, he is absolutely irreplaceable, but his legacy will live on by his example, and we are all better for knowing him. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
Yeah, just want to add on and request, Ms. Sidio, that you add all of our council members onto this adjourning motion. You've all hit it on the nose. I mean, you can go to Quimby Park right now, and people know who he is. And that's rare. I mean, to be able to say that about parks scattered throughout our city, that we're all able to stand up and say that is pretty amazing. But, but he would help with some of the, he knew a number of the homeless people. He would help with the cleanups. He's known by, by everyday people in our parks. Really, this is tragic. He's a- Really, this is tragic, he's a, was a truly special person, and may he rest in peace.
Mr. Lee?
I'd like to adjourn in this meeting in memory of a city family member. Many of you knew him, his name was Tom Stemnok. He passed away October 2nd after a six-year battle with kidney cancer. Tom grew up in South Bend, Indiana, and received his BS in civil engineering from the University of Detroit Mercy, and his MS in civil engineering with a concentration in urban planning from Purdue University. After receiving his master's, Tom moved to L.A. and joined our city's Bureau of Engineering. In 1967, he transferred to the Department of City Planning, where he worked for 10 years. In 1978, Tom retired from the city and became a partner at ETI, private land use consulting firm and civil engineering company. And in 1994, Tom and Dwight Steinert established Planning Associates, which provided professional land use consulting services, environmental planning, zoning entitlements for commercial, industrial, and residential projects throughout the city. Throughout his 54 years in this profession, Tom enjoyed the challenges of his work and many friendships he made. He continued to work full-time until his passing. I know Tom because he served on numerous boards and committees and professional organizations, and he had a deep commitment to serving our community. And in 1982, he was founding board member of the Arroyo Vista Family Health Foundation, which provides comprehensive health care to low-income families and the uninsured, who otherwise would not have access to quality health care. Tom is survived by his wife Christina 47 years, his son Jeffrey, daughter-in-law Ginger, his granddaughter Felix Anne Marie, and his sister Kathleen. He will always be remembered for his love of his family, his kind soul, internal optimism, and his love for the outdoors. Tom was a dear friend, mentor to many. His memorial services will be held Saturday, November 9th at 10:00 a.m. at St. Richard Catholic Church in Borrego Springs. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Weezer?
That adjourning motion as well, please, thank you.
And I'd like to be added to that as well. I knew him from back in the earliest days of West Hollywood, and he's, he's a friend and someone who was great to work with as well. I'm looking to my left for other adjournments. I'm looking to my right. Seeing none, we are adjourned.